Well, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Tom Hoffer and I have the opportunity to serve this organization as its CEO. I'd like to thank all of you as business community members for being here today. I can't think of a more important lunch that we will spend this month than to hear from the individuals who are willing to take on the role and the advisement on our Salem Kaiser School District. Why don't we give all six of these individuals some applause? This chamber is very proud of the opportunity to bring you important programming and this chamber luncheon today would not be happening without the great support of our friends at Sherman, Sherman, Johnny and Hoyt. You will hear a little bit more, but Mark Hoyt is to my left. Thank you, Mark, for this opportunity and for sponsoring today. Ladies and gentlemen, before we get into this program today, I would like to invite our friend, and I believe, where did he sit? Let's see. Michael? Oh, Michael Dwayne Brown, please come up. Mike will be doing our invocation today and we will follow that and we will all stand, if you would, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Michael, we turn it over to you, sir.
Thanks, Tom. First, I have a question. We're both active in the chamber, so how is a chamber organization like a church? And I don't mean they both want your money. That's not where I'm going with this. Thank you. Both organizations bring out the best in their members. I invite you to join me in prayer. Father Creator, Sustainer of Heaven and Earth, I praise you for being a God of hope, forgiveness, truth, judgment, mercy and grace, a God who is love. I thank you for your wisdom, your guidance and your protection. And finally, Lord, I ask your blessing on this food and the hands that prepare and serve, on these candidates and board members and the organization they serve, and on the staff and the students, and finally, on this community and this chamber. I ask that everything we say, do is going to be glorious reflection on you in the precious name of Jesus. Amen and amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to make you aware of our next forum luncheon. Can please pull out your cell phones the moment before you put them on silent and enter in Monday, May 13th. We will have Governor Kate Brown in attendance and that is sponsored by Withnell Motor Company. Thank you both, the governor's office as well as Withnell, for your kindness and for being present. At this point, if any elected officials are in the audience, if you would please stand and be recognized by your peers. I noticed a number of past presidents in attendance, including Chuck Austin. I know Barb Hackrush is here. I saw Alan Kostick, Ken Junt. I'm sure I've missed a few others. Kathy Goss, Richard Pine. Ladies and gentlemen, would you serve this organization so well, would you please stand and be recognized? I didn't miss any. Fantastic. And lastly, this organization is guided by 23 very talented individuals who are committed to driving our organization forward and contributing to this community. If I could, may I ask our chamber Board of Directors to please stand and be recognized for their service? I want to take a personal moment to share with you and ask a very special young woman to please stand up and re-recognize. All of you as managers of people in business, directors in your company, CEOs and the like, there is no day that you take more pride in than one of your employees coming to your office and sharing with you that there has been so much training, so much camaraderie in the office that another employer has found them to be very attractive to hire within their company. Our own Katia Gola Viznina has had such an opportunity. Katia, would you please stand? Katia has served this chamber in a partnership with Mountain West and done a lot of leadership development for us. Katia has had the opportunity to, in my first 90 days, be an incredibly powerful, energetic and inspirational young woman. Katia is going to have the opportunity to take a new position within Mountain West and Katia, I want you to know, this organization appreciates your time with us. It is going to be a huge hole that you leave, but we couldn't be prouder of you. Thank you so much. Okay. At this point, we're going to get into the meat of why we're here. We're going to hear from our wonderful sponsor and to do that, I'm going to turn it over to TJ Sullivan, or pardon me, I'm not turning it over to you yet, TJ. We are going to turn it over to Mark Hoyt to give an introduction of Sherman, Sherman, Johnny and Hoyt. And again, thank you so much for the graciousness of creating this program today and enabling us to gather. With that, Mark, the podium is yours.
Thank you and welcome. I want to thank the chamber for all the work they do in putting on these forums and bringing us all together to receive the information that we receive at them. We at Sherman, Sherman, Johnny and Hoyt are pleased and proud to be able to sponsor this kind of event because the information that we receive today will help us go forward and understand what's happening in our school system, which has a direct impact on our future, the future of our kids, which is the future of our community. So we are here today to hear from folks that are directly influencing all of us. We believe that will be helpful. And just as information is critical in our business where we try to manage risks and expand opportunities, we believe that having the community be as informed as possible is most critical to its success. And so we're pleased to be able to play a small part in bringing today's program to you. We're also pleased and want to thank all of the candidates for the school board positions. We recognize that you are seeking to serve, lead and better our community and for that we say thank you. So I'd like to have our group stand. We have four of our lawyers here today. We have Gina Johnny, Justin Thorpe and Melinda Roy. And I'm pausing because I'm going to try this last name for the first time in public and it's not easy, Lindsay Abigday. So these are our group here. With that, I'm going to turn the podium over to Katie Kostick. We'd like to say thank you all for attending. Before I do, thank you for being here. Thank you for receiving the information that will help you go out and help us further what these people are trying to do in serving the school board to make our community better. Katie Kostick is the Marketing Director at AC and Company, a proud downtown community-focused architecture firm. I'm sure you're familiar with their work. If you know what they have done, you would know who they are. Katie serves on the Salem Chambers Public Policy Team and is a 2014 graduate of Leadership Salem. She serves as a board member of the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation as the VP of Equity and Access. Katie will serve as our moderator for today's candidates forum. Please welcome Katie Kostick.
Usually I'm just in charge of a two and a half year old, my son Santana, so we'll see how this goes. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you here today. Each candidate will receive a brief introduction identifying only your name and zone for which you are running for office. Each candidate will be provided two minutes to introduce themselves to the audience and share the platform for running for Salem Kaiser School Board. There will be a timer with visible cards indicating time. Mr. Tom Hoffer down there, one minute, 30 seconds and in time. We will start the candidate presentations with Zone Two candidates by alphabetical order and progress into Zone Four candidates and finally, Zone Six. Following the two-minute introduction by each candidate, we will transfer to the Q&amp;A portion of the meeting. This will allow guests in attendance to submit questions for each zone race. Each candidate will have one minute to reply and then their opponent will be allowed the same equal time to reply. For the audience, if you have specific questions to a specific zone race, please indicate the two individuals that you would like addressed by that question. First up, Marty Hayen, incumbent for Zone Two.
I want to say it's an honor to be here and to see a lot of my fellow board members here in support today is really great. It's been an honor to serve the Salem Kaiser community for the last three and a half years. As a board member, I use personal life experience, of which I have a lot, along with data and public testimony to help me shape and guide my decisions that I make on the board. I'm a mother and my son attended pre-K through graduation and I had the honor of actually giving him his diploma two years ago. My family consists of three different ethnic groups and two naturalized citizens. I plan to continue to be a voice for parents, helping them get resolution for issues affecting their families and to continue to confront bullying, which is a national problem. And of course, technical education will get my full support as it always has. If I'm re-elected over the next four years, I want to make parents more aware of the school board and what we do and that we are a resource to them, so many do not know. So I already have a beginning plan in place. I am scheduled for a parent-teacher meeting next month where I'm going to go out and meet the different parents and tell them how we can help them. A lot of focus in our district is placed on sports. I want to bring some focus to the arts. For example, the McKay Theater Troop, students gain communication, organization and troubleshooting skills. They learn to follow instructions, improvise and work as a team. All great skills for future business owners and maybe even your employees. It's my heart's desire that every student succeeds in life. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Marty. Next up challenger, Raul Marquez, Zone Two.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Raul Marquez Guerrero and I'm a proud graduate of McKay High School. I'm a current student at Willamette University and Salem has been my home for my entire life. Growing up, I had immigrant parents who came to the United States of America in hopes of providing my siblings and I the opportunities that they did not have at home. Education was one of those things. It was through their hard work that I learned to value work ethic. And I know that I worked hard during high school and I also have to acknowledge that there are countless other students who work just as hard and yet don't get the same opportunities. It is because of my parents' sacrifices that college is a reality for me. But again, that's not the reality for everyone. I hope to ensure that every student in our school district has access to the best education possible. I want to advocate to pursue adequate funding and working with the state legislature and other community partners to ensure that we can decrease class sizes. I want to ensure that every student has the opportunity to engage with our award-winning music programs and other extracurricular activities regardless of their income. I hope to engage with the community members, in particular, parents, so that they can invest in their children's education. We can do this by ensuring that we provide spaces to train parents to have them seek active ways to invest in their children's education. I hope to continue to work with the wonderful people that I've had a privilege of working with to ensure that as we move forward, we address the needs of our students, our parents and our teachers. We have an amazing opportunity with the bond that passed in 2017 to address some of these needs and I hope to be a voice for my community so that we can continue to think through an equity lens. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Raul. We now transition to Zone Four. First up, Dr. Satya Chandragiri.
Hello. My name is Satya Chandragiri. I'm a psychiatrist. I practice here in Salem and many other communities in Oregon. And I have two children who went through Salem Kaiser School District. And they graduated. My daughter is teaching English in Armenia as part of Peace Corps. Now, this is really important for me because until age 12, I didn't know how to speak English. My father was in the Air Force. We came home and mom had left us because of serious maleness. And coming down to south, saw everybody speaking English. And our journey started in such a humble roots, but it was a responsive teacher who changed my life direction. Between me and my wife, we speak nine languages. What really got me started is I have served diverse communities of children, families, veterans and seniors in three countries in the last 30 years of working as psychiatrists. So I have learned one thing, that you really can work with the different groups of people. You can listen to them and you can be compassionate of their journey in order to help them so that we can have a society. Last year, we lost 16 youth to suicide in Marion County alone. When I was on call, there was a 12-year-old child who tried to hang herself and that really broke my heart. And that's when I decided I need to do my part. And when I look at the graduation rate, the outcome, the children not showing up to class, I start looking at the underlying causes. We need to have a robust suicide prevention plan. As of yesterday, we don't have a policy directing suicide prevention for our district. We need bullying prevention. We need positive mental health. There is toxic stress and adverse childhood experience which is really disrupting children's education and behavior. Teachers are getting burnt out and we need to have to deal with the underlying cause if you're really going to have a meaningful system that changes the lives. And that's when I decided I need to step in and do my part. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Satya. Now we'll hear from David Salinas, Zone Four candidate.
Hi, my name is David Salinas. I am a parent of four kids currently in the Salem Kaiser School District, three at Sprague. I have an 18-year-old, two 17-year-olds and a 12-year-old daughter at Crossler. I am an electrician, but I've worked my way up since I was young. My parents were both migrant workers on their families on both sides. My dad had an accident when he was young, so that's kind of what me and my brothers did as we grew up. Work was more focused than school was, so I have experience and I was one of those kids that didn't go to class all the time and didn't necessarily do what I was supposed to be doing. And I've kind of seeked out mentors and believe that, you know, it's not just me myself, it's all of us that it's going to take to kind of change the direction of some of the kids' lives. But I've worked, you know, I've worked my way up through the ranks. I've tried to stay as involved as I can through the school district or through the school process, you know? And I actually had the opportunity to serve on the Boundary Task Force, which kind of brought to my attention a lot of ways that people view our community. I didn't go to school in this community, so I wasn't aware of that. And really, that's what I'd like to bring my voice to the board to help make decisions that it can impact all our students.
Thank you, David. Finally, we will transition to Zone Six candidates. First up, Danielle Bethel.
Hello. My name is Danielle Bethel and I currently reside in Kaiser. I was raised here in Salem. I went to Hoover, Waldo and then McKay. In my 40 years of life, which by the way, I just turned 40, so yay me, I've experienced severe mental health in my house. I've experienced homelessness. I've experienced what it is to be a student who's hungry. And over the last decade, I have been raising my kiddos. I have a 17-year-old, just so we're clear, that goes to McNary. And as I have been more involved in the community, I have realized that there's a significant need for voice to be present. I'm an approachable person, it seems, because folks seem to come to me when there's a challenge, when they need a question answered. And I served my community for about six years, more in the sports world, making sure children in my community had access to activities. I really believe that if kids are busy, they stay out of trouble and they can be mentored and become successful adults. I'm also the Executive Director of a Chamber of Commerce and so I have access to business partners and people who want to listen to make their community better. Last summer, I stepped away from an important role in my community to take some time with my family and it was about 60 days or so that I had that time where I was approached by some peers in Kaiser that were frustrated and very emotional about particular things going on in our schools. And they asked me if I would ever consider running for the school board. And at the time, it had never crossed my mind. I think that we have great leadership within our administration. But then, when that seed was planted, I realized that because I have those partnerships and I have that present awareness in my community, because I am very present and I'm not afraid to ask the hard questions, I should really consider it. So I did. And in October, I made the decision with my family to run for the school board because I want a representation on my school board of the 7,000 employees in the 63 schools that we represent, to be very present and active in this conversation, to make lives better for our kids. That's why I'm running.
Thank you, Danielle. Lastly, we'll hear from Zone Six incumbent, Chuck Lee.
Thank you, Katie, and thank you to the chamber for the opportunity to talk with you today. In these elections, when voter turnout is very low in a May election, it's great to have an opportunity to get together like this. I'm a product of the public schools. I graduated from the Seattle Public Schools. My first job was teaching fourth and fifth grade in the Edmund School District. About a year into it, the levy failed and I was out of a job, but I got a job in an inner-city Catholic school. And so for the last 45 years, I've been involved in education. I've got a huge heart for kids. I want to be a champion for kids. I live in Kaiser and when I came to Salem, it was basically to help start Blanchett Catholic School. And in all the schools I was in, as far as a leader, I always championed the idea of community service. And I realized I was so busy on going to chamber greeters and doing a lot of other things that I was really not doing community service. And as I said, to me, that's essential. And so I wanted to model community service, so I decided to run for the Kaiser City Council where I served for seven years. After that, I was asked by Mike Basinger at the time to step up and run for the Salem Kaiser School Board. So I did that and was elected and I have served three terms. During those 12 years, it's been a great experience. We've hired an excellent superintendent. I've been in a leadership position. We've tried our best to close the achievement gap and that's one thing we want to focus on. Perhaps what I'm most proud of is my involvement and leadership in the Career Technical Education Center. My job has been to bring industry, philanthropy, business, foundations and corporations to the table to provide a CTE facility that this community didn't have. And now we've got 98% of our graduates graduating and so our role at CTE has been huge. Thanks.
Thank you, Chuck, and all of our candidates for setting the stage with your platforms for candidacy. We now will move into questions and answers portion of our program. And as a reminder, candidates, you will have one minute, in just one minute, or I will be interrupting for each question. Before we begin with the actual questions coming up, I'm reading Tattoos on the Heart by Father Gregory Boyle. If no one's read it, I highly recommend it. And something hit me the other day while sitting in an appointment. I read a quote that he refers to by Robert Frost about how many things have to happen to you before something occurs to you. And it just made me sit and think. He followed it up by saying, "Change awaits us and what is decisive is our deciding." And you people, whoever ends up on this board or remains there, really are in a position to make those decisions for our kids and that's very important. So I admire that you're spending the time and dedicating that to this. All right. Let's start with Danielle. Share one area of improvement you'd like to see in the school district.
I'd like to see more access for our teachers to control their classrooms. I have three kids. I mentioned earlier my son, who's a high schooler, but I also have a middle school, seventh grader and a fifth grade elementary student. And I see more often than not, teachers being more controlled by the system than being the free thinkers and professionals that they were hired to be to impact the lives of the students in their classrooms. I don't think that a one-size-fits-all concept works for any breathing thing and I don't think that it should be something that we have in our classrooms. So specifically, I'd like to see more control of classrooms by teachers.
Awesome. Mr. Lee?
Same question.
Same question.
What was it?
Share one area of improvement you'd like to see in the school district.
Well, I've been a huge proponent of career technical education. I think that, you know, all of the studies that I've seen is that even if kids take one CTE class, it improves their chances of graduation by at least 10%. Our graduation rate in our school district right now is about 72 or 73%. And it's my firm belief that the more that we can invest in career technical education across the board, will benefit our entire district and all of the kids. I've been endorsed by the teachers. I feel like I've been a strong advocate for the teachers in the classroom, working with the Counseling Advisory Committee at Claggett Middle School. And so I just feel that during the 12 years, I've really had the experience to continue to lead our district in working to make our teachers as effective as possible and also to improve career technical education.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Salinas, what is the one area of improvement you'd like to see in the school district?
You know, I'd really like to see, I had the opportunity to attend a press conference at North Salem High School where they announced the graduation rates and they talked about these mentor programs. I know me personally, I wouldn't probably be in front of you right now if it wasn't for certain people in my life that helped guide me in the right direction when I was, you know, making dumb decisions. And I think that's kind of where the business community comes in. There's a lot of people in this room that a lot of people in our community look up to. And I'd love to see, you know, as a community, all of us come together to provide these mentor programs for the kids and find ways that we can expand what they're already doing to reach more kids and help in that way.
All right. And before we get to Ms. Hayen's response, if anyone has a question, just write it down and hold it up. The ambassadors will grab it and bring it up. Ms. Hayen, what is the one area of improvement you'd like to see in the district?
Not to embarrass you, but it's Hyen, so just kind of wave your hand when you think of me, Marty Hayen.
Hyen, thank you.
A lot of people get that wrong. Anyway, there's lots of things going on. Certainly, I want to improve communication with parents and teachers in our district. But one thing that's so heartbreaking is when I hear what's going on with some of our teachers in our classrooms, as well as how our kids are affected every time there is a room clear. And a part of this has to do with legislation that came in the past and how we have had to deal with it as a district. I'm very happy to say that there is a bill and I plan to testify in favor of it on Wednesday. Sorry, I don't remember the bill number, that will help reduce the room clears because, you know, every time you clear out a whole classroom because of one child's behavior, unfortunately, all those children lose education time.
All right. Thank you, Dr., or Ms. Hayen. Dr. Satya.
We have a very urgent need to first deal with saving lives. I believe the school has to serve three important purposes: safety, health and learning. We have lost 16 youth to suicide last year. We still do not have, as of today, a suicide prevention policy that is district-wide. So within the next 30 days, even before the election, I have offered to write a template which they can borrow and introduce. In my website, I have a very detailed policy paper, position paper. So that's one important thing. Second, as a corollary to that is, we need to have a trauma-informed system of schooling. We have added a few more behavioral specialists. That's not going to cut it. It's like going to have more wounded teachers. But that's not the way to go about. We need to have a same blueprint across board we have to follow. And there's a couple of steps that is involved in introducing a trauma-informed system. That's what Walla Walla High School principal did. He brought down the expulsion and disciplinary rate by 85%. There's an immediate urgency to that. So those are the two important things.
Time's up.
Sorry, sorry.
And I do need to apologize because Dr. Satya and David are Zone Four and I swapped over. And so incumbent, Hyen and Raul Marquez, Zone Two, your chance to answer what's the one area of improvement you'd like to see in the school district?
Yeah, so in addition to decreasing class sizes, I think we also have to address the fact that we have under-resourced classrooms. So when you have this two hand in hand, it poses obstacles for various students. So how we resolve that is we continue to provide as many opportunities for our students, whether that's in career and technical education, whether that's in the fine arts and making sure that students have access to be competitive and... sure that students have access to be competitive in whatever career path they choose to take, because we should be equipping them with the skills to be able to do so. And so as we look at ways that we can create avenues to fund these programs, we must continue to work with the state legislature. We must ensure that we are working with our community partners, who have been, who are the people that are the foundation for a strong education and a strong Salem-Kaiser School District.
Thank you, Raul. This question is for Zone Six, Danielle and Chuck. Let's start with Danielle. Do you support the current legislative plan to raise $2 billion to fund school programs in Oregon?
Well, I think that's a loaded question. I think that without being able to look at the budget in detail to be able to say where we would move money around if we didn't have the money, I mean, it's really not a yes or no, but if I had to say yes or no, my answer would be no. I think that we need to look at PERS reform, and we need to figure out how to spend the dollar better. I don't think that you can keep throwing money at a wall and expecting a solution to come from it, and that we have a lot of smart people in the room all the time, and we need to start listening to those smart people to figure out how we can best utilize the money that we have available to us, and then look at raising more money from there if it's needed.
Mr. Lee?
My answer would be yes. I, in the 12 years I've served on the school board, budget, budget, budget has been the big issue for us every time we try to do long-range planning, every time we try to lower class sizes, every time we try to increase counseling. Our counselors right now are serving 500 kids, which is atrocious. We have done wonderful things with our budget over the last 12 years that I've been involved, and we've had a lot of support from our employee groups to make sacrifices to, to keep the quality as strong as it possibly is. But at the end of the day, if we don't have more resources in our schools, it's going to be very tough, and I know this is probably not politically correct, but it's going to be very tough to increase the quality that we can offer with kids with variety of different resources.
Thank you. Let's start with Mr. Marquez on this one. At the completion, or actually, this is, yeah, for Zone Two. So at the completion of the current bond project, is it predicted that we will be overcapacity at some of the most vulnerable schools? What will you be able to bring to the table about class size and capacity?
Yeah, so again, we do have a wonderful opportunity with the bond that passed. I think there is, you know, still room to have conversations surrounding how we allocate the funds. I know a big topic of discussion was the Boundary Review Task Force proposal, which in the end was approved, and I think that was a great first step in creating immediate relief for schools like McKay and North that are facing the most overcrowdiness in our schools. I think moving forward, we must ensure that we're equipping our staff, and our teachers, our educators, and our schools with the resources required to be able to address some of those needs. So moving forward, I will continue to advocate for ways that we can reduce class sizes so that our students receive the support that they need in order to succeed after high school.
Thank you, Raul. Marty, Hayen? Hyen? Got that one.
Do you repeat the question, please? Just make sure I have all of it.
Yes. At the completion of the current bond project, it is predicted that we will be at our capacity at some of the most vulnerable schools. What will you, what will be, what will you be able to bring to the table about class size and capacity?
Well, I've already done it, actually. Not really me-me, but we've done it as a district. At the last school board meeting, or the one before, I made a promise to our community that I would do everything I could to make sure to give the best for McKay. I can only say so much because it's not in the public yet, but instead of the estimate of 98% full in 10 years, it will be 90%. So I've done it. It's already decided, I believe, and we will move forward with that.
Thank you. We'll start with Dr. Satya on this one. What interactions have you had with parents and students to better understand what is needed from you at the board level?
My journey in running for the school board started last in 2018. I started with a focus group of South Salem kids, and that's where I started. They identified seven issues. That was after a school shooting incident somewhere in the country. So they are scared. They talked about all the topics, seven issues, and they talked about wonderful solutions. I've written a detailed piece in my blog section. And this journey continued throughout. I was doing door-to-door. That's when we heard the second completed suicide in one week in Spray. My heart broke because we suggested some practical solution to deal with it, which went thin. And then I've been meeting with legislators, elected officials, family groups, neighborhood association, small groups of Hispanic families who invited me to their home to say that they're very frightened. The children are getting bullied, they are scared to voice their opinion in a public forum. And I've also met with some Sikh community. So this is what I've been doing as a way to kind of understand, listen, and then make, come up with practical solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Satya. And this will be for all the candidates. We will go over to David Salinas. What interactions have you had with parents and students to better understand what is needed from you at the board level?
A lot of my journey started with the Boundary Task Force, so I was able to, you know, go through that process and meet with parents. They held community forums and events that we were able to get community feedback on some of the proposals that we were doing. And that's where it really started. I had the opportunity to kind of have a sidebar with some of the parents, and went to lunch and, you know, had some conversations to hear their concerns, so that I could, you know, take their voice back with me to the Boundary Task Force. So that's really where it started, and I think that's where it's at, and where it will continue to be. I also have reached out to a lot of the district folks to meet with them and see how I can better serve our community as a board member. So I will continue to do that until, you know, even if I don't get elected, I will continue to do that, to see how I can help in our district.
Thank you. Mr. Lee? What interactions have you had with parents and students to better understand what is needed from you at the board level?
I've been extremely accessible over the last 12 years as a board member. I think that the numerous meetings we have at the board level, we have open times for public comment. I'm a member of Rotary, so my paths cross a lot in Kaiser with parents and get an opportunity to talk to them. In my role as the leader of the Career Technical Education Center, we've spent an awful lot of time talking with parents and students and getting to know them. It's been a unique position I've been able to have. This year, we had 823 kids apply for the 600 spots at CTEC for next year. So that's a lot of contact with parents, it's a lot of contact with kids. I'm in a building every day with, next year will be 1,000 kids. So I think that during the 12 years, I've had an awful lot of experience in this area.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Ms. Bethel?
Maybe it's not something to brag about, but my phone number seems to be on the internet. Parents just call. I receive phone calls right now. I made my announcement early February, and since then, I've learned of something new each week in the community, because people text or call. My office is pretty accessible, and they stop by, and I'm in the schools. I think that because I'm out and about in the community, and people know who I am from all the activities I do every day, people just ask random questions, and then the emotion follows. And I am really interested in knowing what is going on. Right now, I'm working with seven families in three of our schools in Kaiser, work through red tape that's, in my opinion, unnecessary for them to just get an answer on something that benefits or doesn't benefit their child. You know, I'm like Chuck, also a part of a lot of civic groups, but being a present parent in the community really, I think, sets us apart. And I appreciate that parents want to engage me in conversations, because maybe I'm sharing in that experience, and I can help them up the chain to have a better voice.
Thank you, Danielle. All right. This is for Chuck and Danielle. Massachusetts is widely heralded as the most successful system for public schools in the country, and they have embraced charter schools. How can Salem-Kaiser School District better leverage charter schools? And we'll start with you, Mr. Lee.
Well, again, not to beat CTEC to death, but in many ways, what we did with meeting a board, it took us about a year to go through the whole process of establishing a public-private partnership between the businesses and philanthropy and foundations and corporations in our community, and the school district to provide a program that we've wanted in this city for over 30 years. And had it not been for that public-private partnership, we still wouldn't have a CTEC today that's graduating 98% of the kids. So it's not necessarily a charter school, but it's part of the philosophy that I have, where I'm open to doing what we can to provide opportunities for kids that currently don't exist. Charter schools are another great example of that. I think the Howard Street Charter School is probably one of the most successful charter schools that we've got, certainly in our community, but maybe the state.
Great, thank you. Danielle?
What was the question?
How can Salem-Kaiser School District better leverage charter schools or similar programs?
Well, I think we have to be talking about them publicly. I think that we talk so much every day about the burdens on the general ed classrooms and the schools that we're dealing with in the masses right now, that people don't really come to the table and talk about charter schools. I'd say a good portion of the parents in Salem-Kaiser have no idea how to get into a charter school, what charter schools are available, and what they can do for a child. And I think once you have those conversations, there is awareness and a real desire to have more of them, you create a plan with partners in your community to get them here. And I think competition is healthy. I think that charter schools create an opportunity for families and students to set themselves apart in a community, and if it's done right, it can be successful.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to give a plug for AC and Company. We're having a lot of fun redesigning the new Howard Street Charter School over on Marion Street. Couldn't resist, sorry. This is for all. My son's first-grade class has 30 kids in the class. Aren't we setting our kids and teachers up to fail when class size is so large? What can the district do to address this? And we will start with Raul.
So again, on the issue of class sizes, yes. So to hear the numbers is very shocking, but given kind of the system that we have, we don't have anything in place to help support all of our students. And so when you have large class sizes, this is hindering the ability for a teacher to create meaningful relationships with their students, to be able to invest individual time on students, so that they can focus on their academics and extracurriculars. So this, the class sizes right now pose other threats to our education system. It hinders, you know, a student's ability to learn as well. And you, as you look at the numbers, as we go on through middle school and high school, the numbers don't change, and if anything, they get larger. And so this issue of overcrowded classrooms is very harmful to the learning of our students and their ability to succeed after they are done with K through 12. So we must ensure that we are actively speaking about ways to address these issues as we move forward.
Thank you, Raul. And Ms. Hyen?
I'm trying to think back to the actual number. Of course, school classroom sizes has been an issue for many, many years, and a concern for all of the board members. I think the numbers brought to us once was it would be $2 million extra in salaries for, to reduce class sizes by one student, or maybe it was 23 million. Sorry, I just can't remember. But one thing that did not address was facility. You can have lots of teachers, but you have to have a place for them to go and a classroom for them to teach in. And that is why we passed the bond, because we needed space. So what it takes is space plus financial resources to make that happen, and that is what the voters voted for with the bond measure.
Thank you. Dr. Satya?
Well, this is a very important question. The bottom line is there's no money, right? We can talk about smaller classroom size, et cetera, but let's look at it this way. We need to think of other innovative ways in the short run. Why don't we have two shifts in the school, same school building? Why don't we think of inside-outside classroom model that some of the places in some of the countries have tried? So let's think of innovative ways in the short run, rather than simply throwing more money, because that's the reality we are dealing with. Even with the boundary changing, it's not going to change the crowding in our schools. Our population is growing. So that is one thing. The second thing is going to require curriculum changes. We need to start teaching very young children emotional regulation skills, like mindfulness skills and way to conflict regulation, and way to kind of settle down emotionally, behaviorally, attentionally. And that is still possible, in my opinion. Then we can have more attentive students, students learning the behavioral problems will settle down. So let's really start thinking. Let's bring all partners. Let's do private-public partnership for different activities, volunteers.
Thank you. Time's up. Mr. Salinas?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Sure. Basically, are we setting up our kids to fail with large class sizes, starting from so young? And what can the district do to address this?
Yes, I think it's, the overcrowding in classrooms is definitely an issue. One of the things that I've heard our superintendent say that I absolutely agree with is one of the things that makes a big difference in our students' lives is people. And I think that is absolutely true. So I think it's really trying to find ways in our budget currently on how we can reduce those class sizes. The budget is something I'm still kind of looking into and seeing how it operates and how the money moves around, but that's one of the things that I think we can do to address that issue. And, you know, class sizes are definitely an issue.
Great, thank you. Mr. Lee?
You know, every piece of educational literature I've ever seen draws a direct correlation between class size and academic achievement. So in answer to the question, I think that that's huge. If we really want to deal with academic achievement, we've got to lower class sizes. So the issue that the board is always struggling with is how do you do that with less dollars? And so for me, it means we really need to step up and be lobbying legislators, state senators, on the importance of this issue. Jackie Winters and Peter Courtney are both supporting me in this campaign. I've got great relationships with our local representatives, and it's my intention to keep lobbying them until we get to the point where they actually step up and fund our schools the way they need to be funded. Until then, we're going to continue to have large class sizes. I represented the board on the Political Action Committee to pass the bond, and that was very successful, and it will give us more space, but it's not going to be the end-all for class sizes.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. And Ms. Bethel?
Yeah, I do think we're setting our kids up for failure, 30 kids per one teacher in a classroom at first grade. I think we're doing it in any grade, because I don't think that a teacher can provide enough individualized instruction or attention for them to be successful. I don't think there's a real answer right now. I served on the Bond Oversight Committee and helped door knock to get it passed. And are we, are we doing something in the short term to try to reduce those class sizes? Yes. Is there a solution in the next 10 years? Maybe. But it's not a conversation that our community is having right now, I think, as a whole. And I think it's going to take more than a group of 25 or 50 people to solve this issue, and all of us need to come together with the business community, who seems to fund a bulk of it, and figure it out, because our community is going to continue to grow. Or maybe we should just say it can't grow anymore.
So this question, I think, is important, but it's written just for Dr. Satya, but I'll give David Salinas time to respond as well. For a long time, suicide has been a taboo subject. What would you propose to raise awareness and get our community talking about suicide in a responsible way?
Anything that is speakable is bearable. That's what I learnt in 30 years of my business. When we start speaking up, that's the way we can deal with stigma. In my opinion, stigma has killed more people than guns, knife, sticks, anything put together. More people are dying every day because of stigma. It's a totally preventable condition. We could have a simple question, like, are you thinking of wanting to end your life? Actually, has higher return on investment than all kinds of equipment you can have? We need to have a robust messaging and public education forum. In my platform, I have this. In the voter's pamphlet, the mother who lost a child has endorsed me. She has put in a statement. She came to my kickoff and spoke publicly, and we are going to continue to use this campaign as a way to get this done. I know what it is. I've been in the trenches. I know what are the gaps, how to fix it. This is what I've done 30 years of my life, and I'm going to get it done. I will offer my services for that. So thank you very much. It's a good question.
And Mr. Salinas?
I actually agree with Dr. Satya. I think communication on the issue is vital to, you know, if you're not talking about something, there's no way that you're going to address it at all. So communication is key. Suicide has impacted my family many times in the past. I have a very large family, so it's, you know, one of those things that it's, it's hard to avoid. You would love to avoid it, but I think the more that we can talk about it, communicate about it, and open up, you know, discussions with physicians such as Dr. Satya, I think will... we'll, we'll all be able to come to agreement and solutions to help our kids.
Do we have time for one more question? All right. I think this one wraps up everything pretty well. We'll start with Ms. Hyen. "What do you see as the biggest downfall in the Salem-Kaiser School District for both teachers and students?"
I think it would have to be the lack of local control. When you have a legislature that makes bills, it makes laws and doesn't think about the ramifications of it, we all suffer. I think putting more control into the hands of the local school board that knows the parents, knows the teachers, and knows the community is how we work on that.
Thank you. Mr. Marquez?
I think that we must fully fund our schools, that we must fully provide the support that we need to provide for our educators and our students in order to equip them with the skills they need to succeed after high school. So this means equipping them with the skills to be competitive in the workforce, or if they choose to go to a four-year university, have those resources for our staff and our educators, ensuring that they are set up so that they can best educate our students. And this, in the long run, will help create a prosperous Salem-Kaiser. This will help our business community, and it creates this positive cycle because the business community, as we know, are the people that we go to to support when we can't have that immediate relief to the issues that we face. So continuing those partnerships to expand programs like AVID, expand programs like CTE within the schools and even at CTEC so that more students have those opportunities will be instrumental to.
Thank you, thank you. Let's see, Mr. Salinas? What, what do you see as the biggest downfall in the Salem-Kaiser School District for both teachers and students?
I believe that, excuse me, I believe we, it's the funding issue. You know, I was surprised to find out that they do a study and there's a quality education model that they put out where, you know, they do all this research and come up with these numbers where this is what it takes to fully fund a quality education, and then it's never funded in that way. So I think it's important to, you know, all of the things that we've talked about today, the class sizes, resources, it all requires funding. And if we don't have that, then, you know, we're really not getting anywhere. So I think it's important for the, to fully fund that quality education model.
Thank you. Dr. Satya?
I think we are all pushing the car in different direction, and the car is getting squished. We all need to push the car in the same direction, in the direction, then the car moves. We are designing a system where everybody is working hard, everybody is pushing, and we're in a traffic jam and the kids are getting squished. We need a child-first vision. Once we aim and design our system based on that, everybody is a winner, I'll guarantee that. Legislators are political people. Anything that feels good, they will pass. They are not thinking of long-term. Kids don't see what is in it for me. I don't know where I'm going, so why should I go there? Educators are thinking of a different priority. Families are kind of lost. We need to bring down the wall that we have. As President Reagan said, bring down the wall, improve transparency. Families don't know what the budget means. I went to some Hispanic families, they said, "We are asked to collect money, but we don't know where the money goes." And they keep telling us pencil is not there, paper is not there. Design a system based on the child first, then everybody's going to be okay. That's the biggest barrier.
Thank you, Dr. Satya. Ms. Bethel?
I love this question, and I actually agree with Dr. Satya. Yeah, don't you worry. I think that we don't do enough as a community to engage our kids. I can't tell you enough how many times I've gone to my kid's classroom or somebody else's classroom and I've seen a teacher melting down because she's not getting enough support from parents and/or the professionals around her, and/or him, for that matter. You know, I used an analogy yesterday with a mom, that if you give a plant poison, is it really going to bloom? And at the end of the day, if we're not supporting our educators, if we're not really helping them with the support they need, and I don't just mean money, wraparound services, they're not going to be able to feed the positive things of education into our kids to help them be healthy, grown adults. And I think that the district does, has done a better job with communication, but I think there's more to be done. And I think it requires every single one of us, whether you have kids or not, in this school district, to engage. I think it's our community, and it takes a village to raise our children, to have a successful community to be in.
Thank you, Ms. Bethel. Mr. Lee?
I agree with everything I've heard here on this last question, and one thing that I'll just point out is that this is a community that really cares about kids in our schools. I've represented, again, the board on the Political Action Committee with the bond that passed in 2008 and also on this last bond measure. This community cares about kids, and when asked, they will step up. Oftentimes, I go, what would West Salem look like had we not built Straub Middle School and all of those kids were going to Walker? So I think that perhaps maybe what we need to be looking at is how do we engage our community, not just when we have bond measures on the table, but how do we involve them day in and day out to rise up, to help us answer the call, to give these kids in the second-largest school districts in the state the education they deserve?
I think a lot of you have already done that by showing up today. So I just want to, am I free to wrap up here? All right. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for your kindness with your penmanship. I work with architects and engineers, and that is not always the case, so have a good afternoon.
Good job, Katie. Good job. Nice job. Yeah, didn't Katie do an absolutely fantastic job today? Ladies and gentlemen, these do not occur without the kindness of companies like Sherman Sherman, Johnny and Hoyt. Mark, thank you for you and your firm for being here and supporting this organization at the Salem Chamber. As I mentioned, we have our next forum luncheon. Again, that is on Monday, May 13th. We'll have Governor Brown there, and that is sponsored by Withnell. On behalf of TJ Sullivan, our president, a number of board members in this room, we have a very special breakfast coming up that you will start to hear about. That's our president's breakfast. That's going to be sponsored by Capital Manor, and our good friends at Ross West Salem will be hosting that meeting, so be on the lookout for that. With that, I am but one man, but I had the opportunity to meet with each of these six candidates prior to today. And to the six of you, on behalf of this business community, I appreciated how thoughtful you all were. Your willingness to serve and to step up is something that not everybody in this room has the capability within their businesses to do. The fact that you six are willing to do this, our community owes you all a debt of gratitude. And why don't we thank them one more last time for doing so? I thought the civil discourse was very, very professionally done, and we appreciate as a community your intent to work well together. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, please go out in the community, be great. This community appreciates you. We will see you next month.